State Farm has options to get you a surprisingly great rate.
Thanks, Jake. Next round's on me.
Like a good neighbor, State Farm is there. Call or go to statefarm.com for a quote today.
Isn't it about time to take care of you? If not now, then when? If you're unhappy with your breasts, or the way they've changed over the years, start the new year off right with a breast consultation with Dr. Lyle Back. Go to ilovelyleback.com to set up a consultation and start off 2022 with a new year and a new you. Dr. Back has become one of the most sought-after cosmetic surgeons in the area for breast implants, breast lift, as well as breast reduction. Feel more confident and take care of you. Go to ilovelyleback.com today.
Did you know running your dishwasher every night with Cascade Platinum actually saves water?
Saving water, smarter with the dishwasher.
It's true. An Energy Star certified dishwasher with Cascade Platinum uses only four gallons of water per cycle, while a running sink uses that every two minutes. Every load saves water.
Saving water, smarter with the dishwasher.
So do it every night. Run your dishwasher with Cascade Platinum, the surprising way to save water.
People sometimes may wonder why they need a big law firm after their injury.
Good evening and welcome to the January 3rd, 2022 reorganizational meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. The first order of business is to have a moment of silence. I would just invite a moment of silence for all the good things that happened in 2021 and all the things we hope for and pray for coming forward in 2022. Thank you very much. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, that brings us to our first round of public comment. I do want to be cognizant of the judge's need to go to probably a couple of different municipalities this evening. So if there is a public comment, we welcome it. Or we just ask you to notice that there is a public comment session at the end as well. Is there any public comment? Okay. Judge Petrucci, welcome.
Thank you for having me.
A double welcome to you. How do we proceed with the swearing in? Do we go one by one, I guess, right?
Correct. If it was okay, I was going to do ladies first.
Okay.
Unless you have a particular order.
Ladies first can be fine. We have two ladies. Tammy? Come on up. Okay. One of you need to be here, so Ellen's first.
How are you? I was gonna say, I was gonna stick you to somebody. I'm assuming they want us on this side, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, come on up, on this side. And then we'll kind of like stand here so the microphone can pick us up. But you'll be on this side because you're gonna do left hand Bible, right hand up.
So Phil can hold it?
Yeah. So come on up.
Right there.
Are you okay with my glasses still? Oh, okay. My glasses are fogging up. It's cold now. Okay. Are you ready? So you'll repeat after me. I, Ellen Snyder.
I, Ellen Snyder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And as a supervisor.
And as a supervisor.
Of Newtown Township.
Of Newtown Township.
I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. It's official. Good job. And Tammy, do you want? Want to do the same lineup we just did? So left hand on Bible, right hand up. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. I, Tammy Sutton.
I, Tammy Sutton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And as tax collector.
As tax collector.
Of Newtown Township.
Of Newtown Township.
I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. It's official. Official, official. Uh, yeah. And I was gonna do Henry next, if that's okay? So come on up.
Well, my wife is home sick right now, so.
Oh.
Ellen, you wanna hold the Bible for her?
It's Jewish.
Yeah, or you can use this one if it's whatever's.
Okay. Hey, that's all right.
You ready?
Ready.
Okay. I, Henry Schrant.
I, Henry Schrant.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And as auditor.
And as auditor.
Of Newtown Township.
Of Newtown Township.
I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
With my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Val, I think we need you back. First of all, Happy New Year. Happy New Year.
I'll be a rental.
You ready? Okay. I, Kyle Davis.
I, Kyle Davis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And as a supervisor.
And as a supervisor.
Of Newtown Township.
Of Newtown Township.
I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We can take a five-minute break for pictures. Okay, moving right along. Are we all ready to keep going? Organization of the Board of Supervisors. Have the election of chairman. And open to motions.
It would be my pleasure to make a motion to elect Dennis Fisher as chairman.
I will second that. Thank you. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, let's call a question. All those in favor of Dennis Fisher as chairman, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you get the vote for yourself?
Yes.
I got.
Yes.
Include my vote in there, yes. I don't think I did say anything. Okay. Motion for Vice Chair.
I make a motion to elect John Mack as Vice Chairman of the Supervisors.
And I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor of electing John Mack as Vice Chairman, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. Four one. Motion to, for the Assistant Secretary, Assistant Treasurer.
I'll make that motion. Elaine Allen, I mean Ellen Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. And I will make that second. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of electing Ellen Snyder as Assistant Secretary, Assistant Treasurer for Newtown Township, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Okay. There's time for comments. I will keep mine brief because I left them on the dining room table. Let me just grab my handwritten notes. I had them all typed out and everything. I just wanted to say, kind of looking forward to the coming year. I'm glad that 2021 is over. We've still been dealing with the pandemic. Even with the progress that we've made with the vaccines, we still are in the middle of a pandemic, so. Just, you know, I'm glad we made strides. I'm glad we made improvements. We did make some progress, a lot of progress in 2021. When I look at public safety, I see that we've hired three police officers. We've completed a capital program, or almost completed a capital program that brought the Police Department some equipment and bought these, the Roads Department, the Public Works Department, some much-needed equipment. We've gotten some grants for the lower, one in particular is the Lower Dollington Road Trail. That should be starting soon. We helped the Newtown Fire Association purchase a badly needed new fire truck. We've funded the rescue squad with the top amount of millage that the state allows. And we, last but definitely not least, we hired an assistant township manager. So welcome aboard. That's pretty good without my handwritten notes. As we look ahead to 2022, we will continue to seek grants. We will continue to, our road program. I don't think I mentioned that in the accomplishments for 2021, but we will do several miles of roads. At least that's what we plan in 2022. We plan to do some IT enhancements, both hardware and software type of enhancement to our IT capabilities. We're looking forward to some promotions in the Police Department. And we're looking forward to two other things. Being able to schedule and draw down our ARPA funds. And we're looking forward to getting up an agreement with Newtown Borough on our fire services. So all that said, that's our accomplishments and some of our goals for looking ahead. I certainly would be remiss if I didn't thank Phil Calabro for his years of service as Chairman of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. Phil was on his third, on one of the last laps of his third term of service as a Board of Supervisors. And he was the chairman for four years, if I counted my years right. I don't know how you could do that for four years. I'm looking at one and thinking, hoping I can make it. But thank you, Phil, for all the kidding, all the mentoring, all the arguments that we had, everything that makes a good working relationship. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis, but I'm not done yet.
Nope, you're not. I didn't want to make it sound like you were leaving, but maybe it did. So that's my comments. Mr. Mack, you have comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I look forward to working with you as the new chairman. I know you've had many years of service to the community and you do a lot of work even outside of the Board of Supervisors, which I acknowledge and appreciate. So I wish you great success. And I also want to welcome our new member, Ellen Snyder, who has been also involved with the community for many years, especially with the Environmental Advisory Council and working with the friends of, what's the park name again? Roberts Ridge Park. And all the work that she's been doing for that is very much appreciated and I'm sure you'll make a great addition to the board. And I welcome back Kyle Davis as well. So look forward to working with all you members. Thank you.
I just want to thank all the supervisors for welcoming me, for mentoring me. Thank you for the opportunity to serve my township that I care so deeply for. I love Newtown Township. I wouldn't be doing this if I didn't. And I think we're gonna have a good year. And thank you, everybody. Thanks for, you're welcome. That's it.
Thank you, Ellen. And I had it written in my notes, but the ones that are laying on the dining room table to congratulate both Kyle and Ellen. So thank you.
Congratulations, Kyle. Sorry.
Kyle, you want to keep going?
I'll say congratulations, Ellen, and also to the new leadership team. And Phil, thank you for your service as chair. Thank you.
And Phil?
I have nothing to say.
All right, thank you all. We'll go into the reporting directly. We'll have a number of questions that we're going to get motions on. And as we go through, there's 20 or 30 of them. So I just, I'll let everybody know how we're gonna go with this. So first set of questions that we have and appointments that we have is reporting directly to the Board of Supervisors to serve the township with compensation for 2022. So it's those people who report directly to the Board of Supervisors and receive compensation. First one is a motion recognizing Michael Lewis employment agreement as Township Manager.
I so move.
And I will second that. Any discussion? All those in favor of recognizing Michael Lewis employment agreement as Township Manager, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, five zero. Motion appointing Michael Lewis as Township Treasurer and Secretary. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
So any discussion? Seeing none, motion appointing, so all those in favor of this motion, which appoints Michael Lewis as Township Treasurer and Secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, the next is to appoint Kilkeny Law and Jerry Schenkman Esquire as Township Solicitor.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mack.
I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of a motion to appoint Kilkeny Law and Jerry Esquire as Township Solicitor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. Four one. All right. And the next motion is to appoint Mary Donaldson as Board of Supervisors Recording Secretary.
I so move.
And I'll second that. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to appoint Mary Donaldson as Board of Supervisors Recording Secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll hear that name a couple of times as we go through here. So individuals, individuals serving with compensation. And the zoning hearing board is a five-year term. In this case, I'm going to read the four people. I'm going to affirm the appointment of the four people that are sitting in seats right now. So a motion to affirm William Wall, Josephine Vlasteras, Paul Cohen, and Tim Potero. There's the four. So the motion is to affirm them and to appoint Matthew McCullough as a seat until 2026.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor of affirming those four people and appointing Matthew McCullough for 2026, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Four one. Thank you. Okay. The next is reporting to the township manager. It's those who report, I'm sorry, report to the township manager to serve with compensation for 2022. We start with traffic engineers. Motion to appoint Remington and Verneek Engineers as Township Traffic Engineers with appropriate authority to attend Board, Commission, and Committee meetings.
I so move.
And I will second that. Any motion and a second? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. Motion to appoint Remington and Verneek as Traffic Engineers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving right along to civil engineers. The motion to appoint Remington and Verneek Engineers as Township Civil Engineer, General and Environmental Engineer, and Lighting Consultant with appropriate authority to attend Board, Commission, and Committee meetings.
So moved.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Mack. I will second it. Any discussion? All those, if seeing none, all those in favor of that motion to appoint Remington and Verneek Engineers as our Civil Engineers, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Moving right along to geographic information system, GIS engineers. Motion to appoint Remington and Verneek Engineers as Township Engineers for GIS services. Is there a motion?
I so move.
I'll second that. Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Motion for Remington and Verneek Engineers to be our GIS engineers. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Page three. Labor Solicitors. Motion to appoint the law firm of Curtin and Hefner as Township Labor Attorneys. So moved. And I will second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Motion to appoint the law firm of Curtin and Hefner as Township Labor Attorneys. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. All right, next is building inspectors. A familiar name. Motion to appoint Remington and Verneek Engineers as Township Building Inspectors.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Do I see any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to appoint Remington and Verneek Engineers as Township Building Inspectors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. All right. Pension Actuary. Motion to appoint Mockenhoff Benefits Group as Township Actuaries.
So moved. I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question to appoint Mockenhoff Benefits Group as Township Actuaries. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. I didn't say aye, but I was an aye as well. Pension Investment Advisor. Motion to appoint the firm of DeHab Associates as Township Pension Investment Advisor. Do I have a second, or a motion?
So moved.
And I will second. So seeing, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's vote on the motion to appoint the law firm of DeHab and Associates. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm starting to run out of steam here. All ready. Okay. Insurance brokers or carriers. Motion to affirm, and there's a number of carriers here, A.J. Thompson, The Hartford, Standard Insurance, Delaware Valley Workers Compensation Trust, Delaware Valley Insurance Trust, Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust, and ADP Services. ADP Services is a separate service. So all those brokers for Newtown Township Insurance and Employee Benefits.
I guess I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion. I'm not going to read it again. Anybody have any question about it? I am going to call that question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, I forgot to vote myself, so five oh. I was an aye as well. Township Planners. Motion to appoint CKS Engineers as Township Planners. I would like to make that motion.
I'll second.
Great. Motion and a second. Any discussion on CKS Engineers as Township Planners? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of CKS as Township Planner, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Five zero. All right. Official depositories. Again, here's a list of depositories that I will read once, unless it's needed to otherwise. Motion to designate First National Bank of Newtown, TD Bank, Invest of Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Local Government. Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, and Univest Bank Corporation as Township Depositories. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And I will be the second. Any discussion? Let's call the question. All those in favor of those agencies as Township Depositories, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. Four one. All right. Earned Income Tax Collector Local Services. All right, let me try again. Earned Income Tax Collector, Local Services Tax Collector, and Tax Hearing Officer. The motion is to appoint Keystone Collections Group as EIT, LST Distribution Tax Collectors, and Tax Hearing Officer. So Keystone Collections Group would be filling those three roles.
I'll make that motion.
And I will second that motion. So all those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor of Keystone Collection Group as EIT and LST Tax Collectors and Tax Hearing Officer, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
All right, four one. Thank you. Auditor. Motion to appoint the firm of Maile LLP as the independent auditor and audit, to audit the accounts of Newtown Township for the fiscal year 2021. And that would be, Mr. Michael, Mr. Lewis, let me just clarify that. They're auditing the books of 2021 because they just closed. Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
I second that.
Thank you. So any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor of Maile LLP as our Township Auditor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Okay. Video production. I have a motion to appoint Video Gold for 2022.
I'll make that motion.
And I will second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to appoint Video Gold for our video production services, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. All right. Emergency Management Coordinator. Motion to appoint Glenn Forsyth as Emergency Management Coordinator. Do I have a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Have a second, thank you. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of appointing Glenn Forsyth as Emergency Management Coordinator, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I was also an aye, so that would be five zero. Fire code official. Motion to appoint Glenn Forsyth as Fire Code Official.
I so move.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. And I will second. So any discussion? Seeing none. I'll call the question. The motion, the motion is to, all those in favor of the motion to appoint Glenn Forsyth as Fire Code Official, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that'd be five zero. Give me one second. I've got a lot of names to read now. Okay. This is Boards and Commissions, Individuals Serving Without Compensation. So these are mainly our volunteer boards and commissions. Starting with the Neshamity and Little Neshamity Creek in the Delaware River South Plan Advisory Committee. The motion is to appoint Michael Lewis as Township Representative to that group.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to appoint Michael Lewis as Township Representative to the Creek and River Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five nothing. Thank you. Vacancy Board. This is appointed yearly, annually. The motion is to appoint Mary Donaldson, ending in December 31st, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to appoint Mary Donaldson as Vacancy Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Planning Commission is a four-year term. The first few names that I read will be affirmed, and then there's two names that are being appointed. Motion to affirm the appointment of Mary Donaldson and Joel Robb, Peggy Driscoll, Kirsten Zalfo, Craig Deutsch, and Warren Dallas. So the motion would be to affirm them, they already have seats, and to appoint Shelley Howland and Terry Christensen. And we would still have one seat open. So do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
And I will second it. Any discussion of that motion? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to affirm the aforementioned persons and appointing Shelley Howland for 2022 and Terry Christensen for 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Okay. Park and Recreation Board. We will only be affirming, in this case, we have three seats that are open. The motion is to affirm the appointment of Dennis Darcy, Catherine Anne Porter, Christie Hardy, Florence Guller, Jan Philios, Rachel Chevitz. So we'd be, the motion is to affirm those one, two, three, four, five, six people.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, gentlemen. All those in favor of the motion to affirm those six people, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now might be a good time for me, that was five zero. Now might be a good time for me to just mention, and I may mention it again, that there are empty seats on a number of Township Committees, and residents can feel free to go to the Township Website, would probably be the best place. I think it's still on the homepage, that we have vacancies on boards, and click on that announcement, and you'll be provided with information about the boards and commissions, and you'll also be given contact information to Olivia Kavenco, who is handling that. And we'll put it on a future agenda. Okay. Moving right along. Newtown Area Joint Historic Commission. Motion is to affirm the appointment of Craig Deutsch, 2022, Anna Marie Kaminski, and Robert Mallor.
William Mallor.
William Mallor, I'm sorry. Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have, again, we are affirming the appointments of those three. We have one seat that is open. So we have the affirmation of the appointments of Craig, and Anna Marie, and William. Have a motion and a second? So let's call the question. Those, all those in favor of the motion to affirm those three people, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Okay. Historical Architectural Review Board. Motion to affirm the appointment of Mike Crane, Harriet Becker, Joseph McCarronan, William Mallor, and to appoint Mary Donaldson, Remington and Verneek Engineers as Building Inspector, and Peggy Driscoll as Planning Commission Liaison, which is a voting member. Mary would be on to 2025, Remington and Verneek to 2022, and Peggy to 2022.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion to affirm those folks and to appoint Mary and Remington, Verneek, and Peggy Driscoll, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. The Newtown Joint Municipal Sewer Authority is a five-year term. Motion is to affirm the appointment of Jerry Schenkman, Linda Bobrin, and David Oxley. I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to affirm the appointment of Jerry, and it's affirming their appointment already, they're already sitting on the board. Jerry Schenkman, Linda Bobrin, David Oxley, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, thank you. Any opposed, in case I missed it? All right. All right, the Environmental Advisory Council. We have a motion to affirm the appointment of Amy Easterly, Peter Giles, Elaine McCarron, and one appointment to appoint Jan Philios to a seat that expires in 2023. So we have those three people affirmed and Jan Philios appointed. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
I'll second.
Thank you. And any discussion on that? Seeing none, call the question. Motion to affirm those three people and to appoint Jan Philios to the EAC. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five nothing. Okay. Again, there are three seats open on the EAC. The Technology and Communications Committee. Motion to appoint Brian Miller, Presum Reges, and Daniel Williams. This is a one-year term, so we're appointing all three of them. Any care to motion?
I'll make that motion.
I will make that second. So any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor of the appointment to, of the appointment of Brian Miller, Presum Reges, and Daniel Williams, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five nothing. Thank you. Building Code Board of Appeals. Motion is to affirm the appointment of Bradley Longoski and to appoint Craig Deutsch to a seat that expires in 2024.
I'll make that motion.
All right, and I will second it. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Motion to affirm Brad Longoski and appoint Craig Deutsch, please say aye if you are in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five nothing, thank you very much. Tax Collection Management Committee. Motion to appoint John Mack as Tax Collection Committee Delegate and Michael Lewis as alternate.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Motion to appoint John Mack and Michael Lewis as alternate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Five nothing. Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is a motion to appoint, is a one-year term, so we appoint everyone each year, appoint Vincent Alfari, Alex Tries, and Richard Weaver. We have, we will have four seats, four empty seats remaining. So do I have a motion and a second?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, lady and gentleman. Is there any discussion about that? Seeing none, call the question. The motion to appoint Vince, Alex, and Richard to the Finance Committee. All those in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five nothing. Thank you. Veterans Committee, again, one-year terms. We have a motion to appoint John DiApril, Ethel Hibbs, Anthony Nwori, Kelly Stormer, and Edward Valenti. All to seats that, it's a one-year term, again, one seat that goes to 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I will make that second. Any discussion on that? I believe that's one, two, three, four, five appointees. All those in favor of the motion for those five appointees, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, thank you very much. All right. Human Relations Commission. Motion to affirm the appointment of Kevin Antoine and Nicole Adams, and to appoint Ivan Weingard. So we have, we are affirming Kevin Antoine, Nicole Adams, and we're appointing Ivan Weingard. Ivan Weingard's seat expires in 2022. Do I have a motion? So moved. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. For the motion to affirm Kevin and Nicole and to appoint Ivan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. Economic Development Committee. These are one-year terms, so everyone is being appointed on an annual basis. Here are the names. Joseph Blackburn, Mary Donaldson, Matt Peters, Edward Tate, Karen Miller, Richard Weaver. And we'll have one seat that's left open. Yes? Okay. Okay. Is it David Fisher or Daniel Fisher?
David.
David. Okay. I revise that, I remind, well, I will make that motion with that addition for David Fisher.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Did everybody get the name David Fisher? With a, is it with a C? CH. And seeing no discussion, I will call the question to appoint that slate of residents to the Economic Development Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five nothing. Thank you, Ms. Donaldson. All right. Going on to ordinances and resolutions. I will have less, less names, but a few more numbers. So ordinances and resolutions. First one is to set the bond amounts for Township Officers. Resolution 2022 R1, to set bond amounts for Township Officers for 2022. And that amount, and that's Treasurer Michael Lewis, and it's in the amount of $3 million.
So moved.
And a second from myself. All those, any discussion on that resolution? All those in favor of that resolution, please, Resolution 22 R1, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. Next is Resolution Adopting Act 153 Exemptions. Resolution R22 R2, certifying properties that qualify for tax increase exemptions under PA Act 153.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you for your motion, thank you for your second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on Resolution 2022 R2. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. Resolution reaffirming the administrative conditional use procedure. The Resolution 2022 R3 reaffirming Resolution 2007 R10, establishing an administrative conditional use procedure. I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion of that? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of Resolution 2022 R3, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. Reaffirm... Okay. Next resolution is reaffirm Resolution 2011 R7 Establishing the Township Pension Plan. The motion to reaffirm 2011 R7 Establishing Township Pension Plan Investment Policy.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mack.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of motion to reaffirm 2011 R7, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero was the vote. Okay. Next resolution is Resolution 2022 R4 Adoption of Fee Schedule. The motion to adopt Resolution 2022 R4 Adopting the 2022 Fee Schedule. Look for a motion on that.
So moved. I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, call the question. Motion to adopt Resolution 2022 R4, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five nothing. Thank you. On our last page. Well, liaison is which I have to read. But, okay, 2022. The next action that we'll take is the 2022 Board of Supervisors Meeting Dates. And the motion is to set meeting dates for the Board of Supervisors for 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mack.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the motion to set meeting dates for the Board of Supervisors for 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Five zero. Okay. Next is the approval of the procedure directing the presentation of proclamations. This motion authorizes the chairman, after pulling the board, to have the chairman sign and the manager attest to proclamations honoring citizens and others for worthy deeds and activities.
So moved. I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the procedure directing... Approving the procedure to direct the presentation of proclamations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. The next is Tax Ordinances and Resolutions. Motion to continue all 2021 tax ordinances and resolutions enforced pursuant to Section 4 of the Local Tax Enabling Act of 2022. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Any questions or discussion of that motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. The motion to continue the 2021 tax ordinances and resolutions, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five nothing. All right. IRS Mileage Reimbursement for 2022. It's the motion to approve the IRS... The 2022 IRS Mileage reimbursement for $0.58 per mile, or business miles driven.
So moved. I'll second that.
Okay. Have a motion and a second for the tax mileage... Tax mileage, I'm sorry, reimbursement. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question on the IRS Mileage reimbursement for 2022. Any... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right. Standing Nonstatutory Committees Authorized by the Administrative Code. This is... There's two of them. Pension Plan Committee, appointed yearly. Motion to appoint Micah Lewis and to affirm appointments of Joseph Martindell, the CAF firefighter representative, Chris Bush, the PBA representative, and John Aroman, CWA Non-Uniformed Employees Representative for 2022.
So moved.
And I will second that. I don't know if I got all those names right. But any discussion of that? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the Pension Plan Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. And last committee is the Occupational Safety Committee, appointed yearly. The motion is to appoint Micah Lewis, Glenn Forsyth, and to appoint the PBA appointment of Chris Bush, and the CWA appointments of Joseph Martindell and Michael Jones for 2022.
So moved.
And I will make that second. Any discussion of that motion? So it's the Occupational Safety Committee. Seeing no discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the appointments to the Occupational Safety Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five nothing. All right. Let me just check my agenda, make sure I'm not skipping anything. I do have liaison and coordination assignments to read yet. Okay. I do not believe this requires a vote. I believe it just needs me to identify who is liaisons for which committees. Am I correct that this does not need a vote? I believe this is correct. Okay. So I'm going to acknowledge those Board of Supervisor liaison appointments to the different committees in our community. So I'll start with the Bucks County Association of Township Officials. That's Dennis Fisher. Next is the Bucks County Community College. That's John Mack. Next is Community Service Organizations. That's Kyle Davis. The Council Rock School Board is Ellen Snyder. Council Rock Senior Center is Dennis Fisher. Homeowners Associations is John Mack. Historic... Let me see. Yep. Historic Architectural Review Board is Ellen Snyder. The Joint Zoning Council is all of us. Newtown Ambulance Squad is Kyle Davis. Newtown Borough Council, Dennis Fisher. Newtown Fire Association, Ellen Snyder and Dennis Fisher. Newtown Joint Historic Commission, Kyle Davis. Joint Municipal... Joint... I'm sorry. Joint Municipal Sewer Authority is all of us. Parks and Recreation Board have Kyle Davis, but I think the other evening we talked about Ellen Snyder as well. Planning Commission, John Mack and Dennis Fisher. County Tax Board is John Mack. Environmental Advisory Council, Ellen Snyder. Technology Committee, John Mack. Finance Committee, Dennis Fisher. Veterans Committee, Kyle Davis. Economic Development Committee, John Mack. And that completes our committee appointments and liaison report. I do need to mention, before we go on much further and before I totally forget, that we did have an executive session on December 30th, Thursday, December 30th, and we discussed matters of personnel. All right. That brings us to our second round of public comment. All those who would like to make a comment can please come to the podium and say their piece, identify themselves, and say their piece. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I don't need to talk about that. I'm with Remington, Vernick, and Engineer.
It's so everyone can... So everyone out in TV land can hear us.
I got it. Thank you. Sorry. I just wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I'm Bob D'Urio from Remington, Vernick, and Engineers, one of the senior associates. Just wanted to thank you all for your continued support and look forward to working with you and your constituents for a great 2022. Have a good one, everybody. Thank you again.
Happy New Year, Mr. D'Urio. Thank you.
John DiApril, Newtown Grant. I take exception to your appointing the Killcandy Law Firm for our solicitor. Past solicitor did a definite harm to the residents of Newtown with the Arcady project. You guys, most of you, same ones that are still up there, voted three times against that project. And because of an error by a solicitor, by that firm, I think it should disqualify them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DiApril. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will ask the Township Manager if there are any miscellaneous items.
There are none, Mr. Chairman.
Any need for an executive session?
There is none, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With that, I will take a motion for adjournment, without exception.
So moved.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, and have a happy beginning of 2022. Thank you. We are adjourned.